My name is Andrew Jackson and I'm asking for your vote to be the next Utah County Commissioner. I want to thank everybody that has come out and everybody that set things up. I've been in Utah County for 18 years. I know what you're going through. I appreciate your time and effort, and I am happy to spend as much time as possible discussing issues with you. First off, I have a question for everybody, and just think about this for a second. Have any of you gone to the dermatologist for an annual checkup and then come back looking like a bowling ball? He's like, "Yeah, we'll just freeze this, freeze that." And then I'm like, "Oh, great, okay." So anyway, that looked like a bowling ball. I want to tell a little bit of story. So I was talking to a senior scout. I was a son of a BMW, so I marched in all the parades. I went everything. I took donations. You know what? Let's get British out of here. Keep our Constitution, make our country free. So they got their squirrel guns and went to battle, and I love those. Also, my grandpa, after Pearl Harbor, went and joined the Navy, left my grandmother, my three-year-old mother, and went to fight in the Philippines. So I have deep love and appreciation for all of you who served our country, and I want you to know that I will fight to uphold the Constitution that we have in our US Constitution plus the state constitution and make sure that we don't have government overreach into our lives. Government's purpose is to protect those inalienable rights of the Constitution. And I want you to know, I know the Constitution, and I will uphold that. I want to give a little bit of a story that relates to you here in Spanish Fork. You're familiar with the Lucky Five Chinese place on Main Street. If you look at me, you're like, "Hey, this guy knows where good restaurants are." Anyway, I was there with then-mayor Wayne Anderson of Spanish Fork. We were eating Chinese, a part of that Chinese restaurant. And I don't know the secret to happiness, but I've had it at a Chinese restaurant buffet. Anyway, we were sitting there when he got a phone call from you telling him that the Spanish Fork interchange would be included with I-15 core reconstruction. When we originally planned for that, we thought it would be a $4 billion project. The state legislature, a lot of people tried to get us to take I-15 off of the long-range plan and out of our first phase because he said, "We'll never have enough money to fund that." So you need to forgive him. And I said, "You know what? Not having enough money for transportation project, so we need to take it off. Like staying, if I don't have enough money to buy food for my family, then they're not going to be hungry for the next six months." That's ridiculous. But that's how a lot of people were. And we fought to keep that on there. And Speaker Becky Lockhart was able to get $1.725 billion for the I-15 reconstruction. Remember, we're thinking of the $4 billion project, but because of the tanking of the economy and nobody had the cash to do transportation projects except the city of Utah, who funded that project out of state funds and not federal dollars, they were able to do that. And we thought it would be from Provo to American Fork, but they were able to expand that to Lehigh, to just south of Spanish Fork. Then, when we had that I-15 reconstructed, it was reduced. We still had some leftover money, and the bridge plates going down to Payson were paid for by a different project. And so we were able to reuse some of that leftover money, fill in the median on I-15, and get that all the way down to San Diego. So my pledge is to you that I will fight for the Constitution. I will fight for our transportation and other funding. I was the chair for six years of the Utah Commission on Aging. I'm retired. I still have to work, so I went back to work for a consulting firm. But I know what it's like to take that scary leap to retirement. And then I also want to clarify some issues or discussion that may happen about the BRT project. I know it's not here, but I just want to clarify that it was Utah County legislators in 2003 that passed a bill that funded that. In 2006, Utah County voters went to the ballot. Seventy percent were in favor of funding that project and a few other projects that we had. So we were able to do that because we have votes. So the most conservative county in the most conservative state in the country voted in favor of that. That was our plan pre-1996, when I came to work for Mountain Land, and it continued. My responsibility to make sure that was funded properly. What you got, the mayor's bishop was the chair of UTA at the time, myself, and a UDOT representative who were put on a special committee to review every bill that came in for that BRT project to make sure there were no overs. For instance, so FTA, the Federal Transit Authority, said, "You can't do that. We don't know that." And we said, "Okay, we're not going to do the project. If we can't have local elected officials who can review those bills before they're paid, we're not going to do the project." So they said, "Okay, we'll try it." It was a success that now the thing that FTA said, "All we can't do," is now encouraged on transit projects because it was effective and under budget. I'll tell you, on the Front Rudder project, it was going to go on. They're building it and everything. Before they opened it up, Mike Allegra, who was the president of UTA at that time, wanted me to go and thank him and have some ice cream with him. Anyway, he said, "You know what? We spent all the money on Front Rudder. We don't have enough money running. I need $20 million to fund that." It's a recession. I don't have $20 million. We're just, oh, it's going to be bad. It's going to rust. And I said, "You know what? I'll just tell them. UTA, you overspent. So we're waiting for years. It's going to rust, but we're tying their belts like everybody else." He got up and swore at me, and I said, "Is that the best you can do?" My grandma swore at me. Anyway, he stormed out. They found the money somewhere. But again, it's holding those cameras because I have the education and experience to know all the different federal, state, and local funding sources. Transportation, for aging services. So during COVID, when the senior centers were shut down, we were able to have people come through and make it a drive-through so that they could get meals on wheels during that time because a lot of people were scared about whether the food was safe to eat at restaurants or other places. At American Fork, it was 400% increase in the number of meals during that period. So I will fight for that. I also want to tell you that I know the needs nationwide. I have worked with Utah County plus that's a county as well. I know what's going on around the area. I've been there for 40, 40-plus years. I've been a delegate for 18. And I just want to say, so San Diego, when Mayor Dan Olson got in there, he supports me. He endorses me. Mayor Wright of Payson also supports me and endorses me. But when Dan Olson got in, the project on Main Street, I-15, was severely underfunded. It didn't score well, but there's the scoring, but you still have that. Got to feel the system projects to get funded. So the project was underfunded. He stood up and said, "Hey." For a year before we were able to find our birth parents, she was able to connect with her mother. Florida, where she was adopted, has closed adoption records, so she couldn't get any information on her birth mother unless her birth mother said it was okay. And she said, "As a daughter, I'm okay with that information." Little did she know, her mother traveled down from Iowa every summer to go to Florida, to go to that adoption agency to see if they had any information on her daughter. Both of them were told by the state, "Nope, not happening. Nobody's requested." But they had for several years. I was able to find that connection. Her mother had married someone else, didn't have any kids because of, she knew that she had given this, that she really didn't want to do, but she knew she couldn't care for her. She had kept a book of all the reunions over that time span and pictures and all the relatives. Her husband knew about that she had given up a baby for adoption. And he, on that, they met. I've got a video of that. It'll be up on my website that shows when the mother, the daughter, her death, and, well, she inherited her daughter. So it was just phenomenal to be able to help that, help her find her birth mother. And it's been a complete difference in both of their lives. So I will end with one quick story and then I'll open up for questions and comments. While working for Mountain Land and being on the Utah County Continuum of Care as a co-chair, my first meeting, they were just going through approving minutes and things like that, but they weren't really solving any problems. So I said, "Let's have a problems and solutions part at the end of our meeting where anybody can come and say, 'This is a problem. Does anybody have a solution?'" Randy Edwards, who is affiliated with the Utah County Veterans Administration, he also sat on that board, he said, "You know what? I have some disabled veterans. They have PTSD. They got pulled over on a traffic violation. They failed the field sobriety test because of PTSD. They weren't on anything. They've lost their license. They want to be productive. They have a job, but they can't get back and forth." He said, "I've been trying for years to get them passes from UTA. Can you do anything?" I said, "Sure, we can do that." And we got those passes, and those disabled American veterans fought valiantly for history, were able to get back and forth from their home over and still be productive like they want to be. I'll be there, open questions. So, sure, go ahead.
I noticed on your post here, you say, "Grow focus on our needs, our families." As opposed to what? It seems like you've left something unsaid there.
Yeah, so opposed to the Tulade that liberals want to push on us, that we have these 15-minute walkable knees all over the place. I don't know anybody who is in this country, in this country, comes to this country with the hope that someday they will find the American dream of living in high-density housing next to the railroad tracks. That's America that I'm used to. And so I want to make sure that the growth is Utah County resident growth, not something that liberals will be pushing on to try and get us to be in the areas. I know the statistics behind that. I know all the air quality numbers, and I know what works. And I will work for making sure that we have affordable housing for our kids, their kids. It's an issue for me. It's an issue for all of you. And I will make sure that you know that I have a plan to do that with utility resources. I've got that on my website. I know we only have a couple of minutes, so I'm going to refer you a lot to my website, jacksonforutah.org. Yes, go ahead.
My question. So they have the meetings currently at 2:00 PM on Wednesdays. Have you been able to attend them? And then more so the question, we're over budget. 133% on the actual program and then 105% for the actual revenue agreement. You talked about finding resources. How would you attack this?
Yeah, great. So I, one, oh, yes, I'm sorry. So she's saying the county budget is off substantially, and there's some discussion on that. Some of the costs have gone up. How can we do these things when we're already out of budget? Is that?
Where do you find the funding? How would you address that problem?
Yeah, that's a great question. So one thing we have to know is a budget is a budget. And there are assumptions on revenues. There are assumptions on expenses. By the state constitution, the state, the cities, the counties all have to have a balanced budget. So having a balanced budget is not a campaign promise. It's the law. However, you have to have a structurally balanced budget, which is one-time expenses. Go to one-time, use one-time money for one-time expenses. Use ongoing for ongoing expenses. So I'm going to look at that. The auditor, the county auditor, Rod Man, the former mayor of Highland, he also endorses me. I've met with him several times. He's one of those spreadsheet guys, pivot tables. I don't even understand that, but he does. And we talked about it. We're looking at a 1, 3, 5, 10-year budget forecast. So we're not increasing, decreasing taxes every year just based off of, "Oh, here's an issue," or "Here's an issue." Remember, there will be a lot of people will say, "I lowered taxes." Not me, but other politicians will say, "I lowered tax rates for six years in a row." Or, "I lowered your taxes. Your taxes didn't decrease." Has anybody here had made a decrease in taxes? No, I haven't. And so what they're doing is they're saying the rate went down, but the value went up, and they're paying more in taxes. So with this longer approach, as well as a structurally balanced budget, then we can look at things. I'm not going to go in there right away and just slash everything. You got to do that. And I've talked with Rod Man again, who endorses me. We can get that done. Other questions? Anyone in here? Sure, go ahead, sir.
I mentioned about first, how is it for our kids? Each step is done. So what was your approach to provide affordable housing for our kids in the future?
Yep. Great question. So it's about affordable housing for our kids and into the future, my kids and great kids, as well as yours. So they have two pieces of property. They're agricultural property. One gets zoned high-density. The other one stays agriculture. The one gets utilities brought to the property. The value has increased substantially. What happened? Two government actions. So what we need to do is make sure we right-size the utilities that are going there because too often they oversize those utilities. And then we also have to make sure that it's zoned properly. I am a strong personal property rights person, so I will make sure that the people have their farm land, their property rights are kept, and they can decide if they're going to keep farming or not. But I think it's at that point to where it's those two government actions that increase the value of that thing. Other questions?
So you're saying with that process, we would try to have the land not be increased by too much so that housing wouldn't be too expensive? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I get that line. So I have a bachelor's and master's in geography, emphasis in city planning. I went back mid-career, got a master's of public administration, also from BYU. And so I have that experience as a planner to look at those things. Obviously, the county is only dealing with the unincorporated area for land use. About 8,000 people of the 750,000 in the county in the unincorporated area. Again, it's, when those things get annexed in to cities or working cooperatively with the cities instead of the commissioners suing each other for several years, and it's an epicenter of dysfunction that we've heard about, I want to bring back function. And I think we can do that. Any other questions? Sure, go ahead.
Along with housing, there's, in Utah County, there's pressure of homelessness that Salt Lake and Ogden face. We don't have any shelter or anything. Does the commission have any purview over that? And how would you deal with that issue?
Yeah, so I think, so this is about homelessness and how we would deal with homelessness in Utah County. I would expect that a lot of you don't know that all the cities and the counties here in Utah County have to make a payment every year to Salt Lake and Ogden. That's because we have liberal Democrats in the legislature that push that through. What I want to do is work with the legislature. I've worked with them for 25 years. I know how the processes go. We need to reverse that so that we can keep the money here and provide services for our people our way instead of the little liberal Democrats in Salt Lake or Ogden.
So that money would go back into, like, funding homeless here?
Yeah, so we'll work on that. And again, it's going to be that dead-away continuum of care that needs to be in there because they take people from homelessness all the way into, a quick story. So at work at MAG, we worked with Sheriff Smith to provide bus passes to people who were in jail. They got released, and they cleaned up their life. They're not doing drugs anymore. So we were able to get them some bus passes. But they have to come in and they have to show that they're in a program that will continue to help them stay clean. A lot of these people have fatigued their family, and they can't count on transportation from their family. They don't have a driver's license, et cetera. This guy comes in. He is the scariest non-family member that I've had in my personal space. He full-arm tattoos, neck tattoos, the gouges or whatever they're called, engages in me. And he came in and he said, "Hey, I just got out of jail. I got a job up at the dirt in Salt Lake. I can't get from my house up there. I don't have a license." So I went and applied for the pass. We were able to give him the pass. And he said, "You know what? I live a little over a mile from the bus stops, and I don't have any way to get there." He said, "Well, you know what? In Provo, they have the bicycle collective, and they can provide you a bike. The ones that were in lost and found and those kinds of things. It's a great program." So we gave him the pass to go down there and get the bike. And he said, "You know what? My wife is having surgery. She's going to be homebound. I'm going to be up at work in the dirt in Salt Lake. Is there anything you'd have to help them out, to help her out? Because she age-qualified, we can bring meals into her for lunch." And this guy's doing this thing right, and I'm thinking, "Oh, no, it must be, you know, have a cheat or something." I looked. He was crying. And he said, "You know what? My entire life, nothing's ever gone my way. When a break's one-way or a break's the other way, it's always been the bad break. I have never got a chance." And he said, "You know what? In the 10 minutes I've been here, I have been three times that it broke my way and got helped." I kid you not, true story, very tough guy, and he was crazy. And we all agree. And that's what it is, is to make sure that we have the rules and regulations that we follow, but also that we have heart toward doing those things. I don't know if I'm expired.
We got about two minutes left. There was one other question here. That would probably be our last question.
Is the county commission truly a full-time job? Because we're paying $120-plus thousand for three individuals.
165?
165, okay, thank you. 165,000 for three individuals. Is that truly a full-time job?
It is a good part-time job for five to seven people. That is something that I would work for. So I don't know if you've heard anybody who's just asking about the full-time commission. I would work for a change in the commission. I sat on all the committees and listened in to the resources. Again, master's of public administration. I know how those things should work. We have too much power and too few people. We have executive, legislative, and quasi-judicial in three people for a county of 750,000. I think you're going to see some legislation in the next year or two from Utah County legislators that will require a change in formal government. You may not know, a town has less than 1,000 people. A city has 1,000. When it's a town, they can have, they have four officials. When they reach 1,001 population, the lieutenant governor sends them a letter, says, "Congratulations. You're now a city. You have to have five elected officials." A city of 1,001 has five. A county of 750 has three. I was in favor of the first attempt to change that. That was stopped. Again, I'll have to go to my webpage, jacksonforutah.org. And if you vote for Jackson, you'll have more Jacksons in your wallet.
6:35. That was Andrew Jackson. We're going to now hear from Skylar Beltran. So same setup. He'll have 30 minutes. And then if he wants to take questions or what we're going to do there, after him, we'll have Tom Westmoreland, and then after Tom, we'll have Diane, and then Jay after that. So now we're going to hear from Skylar Beltran.
Okay, thanks, Carolina, for having us down here. I will give a quick little summary on who I am and how I got here, and then I will give the rest of the time to questions because I believe that we're here to serve you. So I'm going to go all the way back to the ripe age of 16 when you know everything, right? I got my first taste of the real world. I worked as a part-time shoe salesman for Sears. If you remember, Sears is the department store. For those younger people like me, it was the Amazon and Walmart of the 90s. And I had a part-time job there. I worked at Sears all the way through high school into community college where I studied administration of justice, which is like criminal justice now. Continued to work up through Sears, at Sears, at the Provo Sears while I went to UVU in political science. I continued to work at Sears, climbed the corporate ladder, and became the youngest general manager of 800 stores in the company. It was a big task for me, big budget, big teams. I excelled in that. They ended up putting me at the largest store in the district, which was West Jordan. And then I was And then I was a couple of years, Sears' demise, you're all well aware of, and there was no more Sears. So I had to figure out what to do. I didn't want to work for somebody else anymore who could say, you don't have a job anymore, like what had just happened to me. I had bought my house a year previous and I didn't really like my real estate agent. And I said, I could do a better job. I got my real estate license and I've been doing that for the last seven years. Oh, I do not develop anything. I help people like you and I buy our homes. That job has allowed me the flexibility to serve the community. That's a big thing for me, is experience for you. I served as the director of the Lehigh City Parks, Trails, and Trees Committee. Opened my eyes to government and wasteful spending. I would sit there and we want all these things and we just want to just tax for them. Well, I decided, well, I'm being chairing this committee, I'm going to find other alternatives. Alternatives of fundraising, corporate sponsorships, volunteerism, all of those things. And we have done many parks without spending a dollar of taxpayer money. We have Steve Roll Park, which was funded by Hatto Commission and the Rotary Club. We built Dog Park on Dog Park payers. So I like to find solutions without taxpayer money. Then I served as the Utah County Republican Party Chair. So if you know Kristi, I was the Kristi before her. So I served all of you as the chairman. I always hear, well, where was Skylar's share in all this very conservative opinions when I was chair? Glad that that wasn't known because my boss facilitated not letting you know my opinion. So I feel I did a good job as the chairman. Next, I served on the Utah County Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustments is an action-based, best-of-the-board that very much influences policy on here in your part of the county. If someone wants to build, Benjamin is a center of dog boarding facilities, if you didn't know that. And people would come in for conditional use permits. And we would let, set limitations on hours close to the property line, all those kind of things. Someone in Highland may want lighting for their horse corral. We would say the height and hours of operation, you know, how to mitigate concerns to the neighbors, but also making sure that their property was usable. I did a good job on the Utah County Board of Adjustments. The state legislature, as you know, likes to take power from the cities and the counties. And the county said, hey, they're taking so much authority from Board of Adjustments. We love the way you do things, the way you think, the way you conduct your meetings. How about you move to the Planning Commission? I've moved to the Utah County Planning Commission last year and I serve in that capacity now as well. So I serve, and that's what I like to do, and that's what got me this race. I'm going to give you three things and then I'm going to take as many questions as I have in my time. First, transportation, we all know, is a problem. It's a disaster. I live in Lehigh. And let me tell you, when I drive past Spanish Fork area, you guys look exactly like we did years ago. And we did not do a good job in the north. Need to learn from those things. And that's pounding table for our fair share of transportation funding. It's too much gold to get along, and that's not my style. We see it on every level of government. If we are not getting our fair share, we do not go home and just stay quiet. We let our residents know, we've paved the table, we collaborate with other legislators and commissioners, and we get what we need. If we take the brunt of high density, we take the brunt of all of these projects the state wants, we need to get our fair share of funding or not do it. The long-term failed. So I get very frustrated when we hear about all these big plans we've had and enacted. They take 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. We need instant solutions and we're not getting them. So we need to do right-away corridor preservation better than we have. East-west will be the most important thing you guys can have in the south down here. We did not do it well in the north and you will struggle with it down here. We need to get ahead of it. I've seen it, I live with it every day. The next thing is the budget, the budget. $10 million in the hole. Yes, the state and however we want to define deficit spending, we took $9.6 million from our savings account to operate. In our own households, that is considered deficit spending. And I don't do it. $25 million right-away corridors, we can purchase on how many potholes we can fill, how many other projects we can do, but instead we needed it to barely operate the county. We need to do cuts. The problem is, is when we have government people in there for so long, over and over, we don't cut. It's tax somebody else, it's take somebody else's money, it's, the solution is to tax. And I do not believe that's how we operate our own budget. It's not the way the private sector works. If you need to cut, you need to cut, and we're not doing it. So I'm committed to cutting. That requires going into every single department, spending time as an employee for a week or two. Are we meeting needs in our buildings? Are we meeting staffing? Are we overstaffed? Do we have software opportunities, technology opportunities? We need to go in there and start looking for, hey, we're already overspending, blame it on inflation, whatever it may be, let's tax out of it, I don't like it. My third thing, transparency and communication. You will hear me, drive those for so long. We don't know what's going on in the county. And if you do, you're one of the 10 people on the Tuesday afternoon YouTube. Nobody has a clue. Our cities operate much better, in my opinion. We know what's going on by utility newsletters, they have Facebook accounts, your council members are out and about, you know what's going on. The county, you don't receive any newsletters, you don't receive town halls, you don't know what's going on. We need to fix that. That I can fix on day one. Next is transparency. Somebody mentioned the meetings Wednesday at 2:00 in the afternoon. Who can attend that? Last month, what we did is we said, we're going to remove public comment via Zoom and they need to come in. Well, that's the first thing that needs to go back. Public comment via Zoom, you only get two minutes as well. I think we can spare two minutes of our time to hear what our residents have to say, and we need to start doing a better job. The agenda is 30 to 40 items every single week. The meetings sometimes on average last 30, 40, 50 minutes at most. Why is that? Because we run on consent. And I'm not saying that they don't do their homework because they do do their homework the week before, but as a member of the public, I want to see a deliberation in a public format. I want to see who's asking tough questions. Who has concerns I never thought of? Who is, who did you meet? Who did you under, focus on the agenda? And if one commissioner can absolutely fix that because they can hold it for the agenda, and we need to start doing that. It needs to be a public deliberating body. Your city council, a mayor are there for five hours on Tuesday evening, your commissioner needs to be able to do that. So those are my three big things, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Yes, ma'am?
We'll have a question.
Yeah.
Can you please make sure you keep every question?
Absolutely.
Back through, ask your question.
Yes, Chase.
Yeah, so Mr. Jackson said before that he supports the notion of expanding on the commission. Do you have any thoughts on either expanding commission or changing the form of government to match something like Salt Lake County?
Yeah, yeah. Did we hear that? Form of government. That's a popular question and it seems to come up every year. So first, I was opposed to the previous option of a council and a strong mayor. And I don't believe a strong mayor is the right option because that office balloons. They have to have a deputy, an administrative assistant, a PR director, development director. They need all these things. They're the face of the county. And I don't believe in Utah County, we believe one person is the face of the county. That being said, three has not been functioning as well as we'd like it to be. It's been that way for many years. So five part-time commissioners, with the proper study and public support, I would, I lean that way. The question comes districts or at large. So my concern, there's two things. There's a pro to districts. The pro is representation. And lucky for you guys down here, you have Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Sakovic, and you're well represented. But in some cases, us in the north, other areas of the county or wallet cycles who's in there are not represented. And you all know, if you live in a community and understand a community, it's much easier to handle problems. So representation is important, but it comes at an expense because if you see our school boards, for an example, there are seven school board members and their districts, and when they bond or need a property tax increase, they have to give a project to every single one so that they can go back to their voters and say, hey, we're getting this, so support it. We're getting this, so support it. Maybe only one district needs it, but we have to play Santa Claus and everyone gets something. And so that's my frustration and struggle with districts. Possible solutions, maybe we have a south, central, and northern, and two at large. And maybe that alleviates some of that political power and it makes the two deciding at large a better representation of everybody in that situation. Yes.
Could you address something regarding emergency preparedness?
Yeah, yeah. Any specific question?
Just how many resources you would allocate to that?
Yeah, yeah, good question. The question is just a philosophy on emergency preparedness. Great question for down here in the south, as you guys experienced a fire a couple of years ago. It's very important that emergency services are funded and ready to go when we need them. So my parents live in Northern California and we had a fire there five, six years ago. My grandparents' house burned down. They left with wedding rings on and two cars, and they left two cars. And their entire house burned down. So emergency preparedness is so important because we do have to pay for that expense, but when we need it, we need it. And what we do a good thing of in here in Utah County is we lend or help other communities when they need it, with our resources, and we're able to reimburse and essentially profit off of those helping out. So there is opportunities to make sure we're funded there and ready to go in other ways without putting the expense on us. Yes.
Where do you stand on the idea that's been put out there of building a road across Utah Lake?
Yeah, yeah. The question is, where do I stand on a causeway or bridge across Utah Lake? You know, it would require a lot of study and a lot of public input that I don't have, but I will say will alleviate a ton of problems, but we need to make sure it's not unintended consequences as well. That being said, it would service a select few people, it would need to be a toll to where those who are using it will pay for it. The last I saw, $1.4 billion. We can do a lot of projects for that. So it would need to be toll-based. We would need to have a lot of public input and a lot of studies. It's a natural amenity resource and we need to make sure we're not messing it up that way.
Would you in general be for it or against it and what are the unintended consequences you're referring to?
Yeah, we'd have to study that and see what other, a bridge collapses in the news this week. That will happen here. But yeah, we need, I need a lot more input. My initial reaction would be yes, but I also find it would probably be cost prohibitive and we won't be touching it anytime soon. Yes, sir.
To grow the economy here in Utah County, as we get businesses that want to come in, would you favor offering tax cuts? What is the best way to do that?
Yeah, good question. So economic development and tax, I'm willing to do tax cuts. If you've heard me in the last month, I am anti-tax increment financing tax breaks. And I'll tell you a couple of reasons why, and I'll answer if the opportunity were to come, how I would support them. So first, we see tax increment financing all over. We have Facebook, Google, Tyson Chicken, the Orem Mall, the high outlets. I told your guys this morning, you have very few. So kudos to your community and your leadership here in Spanish Fork and Springville, you don't have very many of them. So tax increment finding, the theory is it is economic development for an area that would otherwise not see it, or they're in the foreseeable future, no one would be there. Well, the areas where we're been handing out tax increment financing, I disagree with the concept that we wouldn't have development. So we hear all the time, we're going to grow, we're going to be a million people, we have to prepare for, there's nothing we can do. But we tend to accelerate it every time we have the opportunity. And it frustrates me. We talk about traffic and affordable housing, well, why do we need to give a tax break every single time they come to us? The mechanic next door doesn't get a tax increment financing break. The damn studio next door, he doesn't get a tax break. Nordstrom's got a tax break in Orem Mall, and guess what happened when their TIF expired? They left. We never saw full tax, we never got full tax value from Nordstrom. So the problem that I see there is we're dispersing liability elsewhere. So if we're not collecting those funds from somebody, the rest of us have to pick up the tab. So that frustrates me. And when our community is so, we're well-educated, we have two universities in Utah County, we're the youngest state in the country, we have low tax burden, I know sometimes it feels like we don't, but in other areas it's much worse. We have low tax burden and we're welcome and open to business. If those things don't work for you, then maybe we have to say no once in a while. We don't like to say no. I'm the no guy. We can say no, and we see it all the time. Well, can you do, no, no, we can't afford it, we don't want it, we don't, we're not interested, no. And we don't like to do that. So I think we need to do that. A good example is on my time in the Utah County Board of Adjustments, we approved five solar plants in the Cedar Valley in the last two years. Huge solar project. And recently, two months ago, the commission just gave the tax increment financing, the tax break, one of those five solar companies. So my concern is five companies were willing to foot, to foot the cost of designing it, hiring consultants, coming and pulling the permits, studying it, finding purchasers, and then all of a sudden you're going to tell me they wouldn't come without a tax break? I don't buy it. And why? Just a principle alone. So let's take out the idea of, hey, they're not going to come, maybe we want to incentivize some jobs. On the principle alone, it's picking winners and losers. Why did we pick that one solar company and not the other four? To me, I'm against that. Yes, Lorraine?
So we need to come up with a budget cut.
Yeah.
So what's your relationship with law enforcement?
Yeah, yeah.
Because we grow, that's what we're, it may not be right now.
Sure.
But I don't like the budget cut going because they don't-
The public safety, yeah, yeah.
So the question is, cutting budgets, budget administration and law enforcement, the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office, over 70% of our county budget. So you know, it doesn't leave a whole lot of room there. But I'll tell you what, if we ever have a crisis in safety, it's impossible to get, put it back. So it's very important that we spend and we have a good relationship with the sheriff's office and we continue to spend what's necessary there because we value a safe community in Utah County. We live here for that reason. Anytime we have visitors and we walk to the park and we leave the garage door open and our family from California will be like, do you need to close the garage? No, it's fine. Our neighbors are watching it, we're okay. There's a reason we live here. I call it the bubble. I love the, I don't want to be Salt Lake, I want nothing to do with Salt Lake County. Their tax, their homelessness, their crime, their reckless spending. So no, some public safety cannot be cut. It needs to be protected and we need to continue to spend there. I've met with Sheriff Smith, he feels good about the way we've been able to pay our officers lately, that's been a problem in the past. I feel he's doing a very good job managing his budget. We were able-
Yeah, good question.
The question is, when you cut the budget, where is it going to come from? So it would be unfair for me to say I'm going to target somebody specifically without being in there and giving everybody a chat. So the first opportunity I would call the low apple on the tree. The health department is still up from 2019 and we need to go in there and figure out what's going on there. Whether it be staffing or programs, being on ARPA funds, one coronavirus funds, we need to make, we didn't get any ongoing programs with time fund. Their format is still over 2019, so that would be the first place that I could look. Also, it's just, the reporter's office is a big example. Andrea's done an awesome job at being self-sustaining and using technology to improve their budget and their efficiency. Anthony Cantor has also been able to cut. So technologies are friends. We need to be able to find ways to streamline and make things more efficient and we can cut costs that way. But talk about cuts, basic conservative principle, there are two things that drive me crazy. The commission, Mr. Jackson covered, they make $166,000. Two years ago, folks, they made $119,000. Two years ago. In the last 700 days, they have gone from 119 to 167. Is that a conservative principle? Absolutely not. Nobody else has gone $50, $60,000 raise, and it's unacceptable. And not only that, we've hired a county administrator. So we've taken work off the commission and we're paid. I don't know about you, but that is not a conservative principle. Is it going to solve our budget? No. But that's the kind of mentality that I don't like. And we've moved our travel budget, the commissioner's travel, it's $500 last year, they moved it to $20,000 apiece. $20,000 a year to go travel to conventions and all these things, Washington DC. I don't care about Washington DC here in Utah County, and we don't need to go visit there five times a year either.
Along with your comments on, what could you do, Commissioner, any, to prevent federal governments from dumping illegal aliens?
Yeah. So the question is law enforcement, illegal immigration and federal relationship there. So I'll start by saying Sheriff Smith does a great job of pushing back and saying no and he was very good at that during coronavirus as well. That being said, illegal immigration is a problem and it's going to be a big problem here in our community sooner than we think. And we see already one, two, three illegal immigrant arrests per day in Utah County already. So it is a problem. It's a federal problem that we have to deal with and there's not a whole lot of recourse other than to...
Do you refuse resources?
Yeah, yeah. They don't give us much resources and when we do an ice hole, we don't, they don't really take care of it. So you know, we're stuck there. Can we deport them ourselves? No. Can we build a fence around Utah County? No. But we can make sure our community is safe.
We can prevent them from getting housing?
Yeah, absolutely. I would never, I would never. You all make commitment. You will never see me vote to house or support illegal immigrants while they're here or $1,000 visa cards as New York opened this week. You'll never see that. But we are at the mercy of the federal government to take care of it, but we can keep our community safe while we're balancing that struggle.
We've got about nine minutes, so a couple more questions?
Yes, sir.
You brought up a lot of...
Yeah.
In your opinion, why are they over budget and what would you do to fix it in the future?
Yeah. So you know, I've spent a lot of time in the budget and we run very lean and that's been our history for many years. It provides challenges for us. And our number one expense is labor, labor costs and inflation, you know, something that is a challenge and it's not so much fluff. So it's a fine balance of getting as efficient as we can in every area. Self-sustaining departments is important. Is our Health Department charging the fees that it costs to administer the services they're doing? The Recorder, are they charging the fees equal to what the expenses are so that everybody else is not paying for it? Should you pay for someone else to record their deed? No. Should you pay for someone else's coronavirus vaccine? No. And so that needs to be paid for by the user. So I'm a big proponent in user-based fees. Anytime we have the opportunity to charge the user who's using it, we need to do that. The Marriage Department, the Clerk Office, they do a great job at that. So we have to find efficiencies that way. But can I stand up here and say your taxes are going to be lower and we're going to be super awesome and leaning? Well, there's a point where we're as lean as we can be. Do I believe we're there? No. But there is a point where we can be maximizing our efficiency and there is no room. So we need to get there. I don't think we're there. But I'm not going to be someone who's just going to placate you and say, well, we can always cut. Well, we can always cut. There is a point where we have to pay for job rate or county and we're not there yet.
So you mentioned about transportation and during that time, the communities must commit to these policies.
You shared them in the past.
So as the wife of six...
Yeah.
Sitting here reception.
Love it.
We don't want to be high down here. I have no intention of...
Right, right.
How do you intend that you're going to come purposefully through my family's farm grounds? Who's going to go anywhere? And on top of that, how do you, I guess, what's your kind of better planning?
Yeah.
If we're not going to cooperate with MAGA and I don't know if you know about Spanish Fork, we have, one of our city councilmen is actually former deputy director of PDOT. So I guess what can we do then?
Yeah, good question. And in Utah County, we value farmland and greenbelt and our agriculture history and we should continue to do that. I, you know, we, I've approved many agriculture protection zones on the Inta County Planning Commission and they're important aspects. We battled them in Lehigh. And we have seven meat farms just 10 years ago in Lehigh. And then Ed Holmes and our partner want to build townhouses right up and share a fence with a meat farm. And everybody would call and complain to the city, the county every day. And the true answer and the answer they need to be told is you chose to move next to the farm. The farm is not going to move. You are the one who purchased your home. Now I'm sorry that you were not smart enough to know that meats melt and they breathe and they can't have lights all day long. So you know, we need to be able to protect our areas that we have. That being said, we wouldn't need the east-west corridor or the development if all of our sixth-generation farmers were not selling their land. So there's a collaboration there. When they are willing and want to sell or develop or anticipate that in the future, we need to work with them before a developer comes in and those kind of things where we can make everybody happy. But you know, we're not going to force you to sell your farm to put a freeway through it. Absolutely not.
So with that kind of waste of money, it's like where would you start then?
No, pieces are great. I think pieces are great. We do it with trial systems. It's never cheaper than it will be today. So we can piece along the way. It'll save us money in the long run.
We're at three minutes. Maybe one quick question left?
Yes, sir.
If you lack a little bit more specific, would you be kind of a member of the U.S.?
Yeah. Well, first be accessible. That's important because, oh, a protection of freedom and liberty. So being accessible is a top priority for me because if you have a concern and you need to be able to tell me. So that's the first, open communication. Because it's hard to take away something or hate somebody or make a decision from, it's easy far away. It's a lot harder to right in front of you. So you need to be accessible. I need to be accessible to you. So that's first. Next is if it's not a role, a proper role of government, we don't need to do it. We see it at every level where the government's there to help you and it doesn't work. And the way we, the way I look at things on services and proper scope and role of government is is it something you can take care of on your own? If it is not, is it something your family can take care of as a family unit? Is it something your church or city or community can take care of? If none of those three things can be met, then we can discuss having the government step in and fill a gap. But until those three things are not able to be done, then I think we need to stay out of your business.
All right, guys. Thanks.
So that was Skylar Beltran. We are right on time according to our little schedule here. We have, we have three left, so I forgot to mention, but bathrooms are right behind us through these doors. We're going to do a quick stand-up move around if you need to. We've been sitting and then we'll get going in one minute. One minute. All right, two minutes. We're going to get started. This is why we don't have a mic because I'm so loud. All right, we're going to get started. We have Tom Westmoreland now as our next candidate. We're going to get him going. He'll have 30 minutes, same format. He can do whatever he wants with those 30 minutes and we'll get going.
Yep, my name is Tom Westmoreland. Thank you for this opportunity to come visit with you tonight. So yeah, I'm interviewing for the position of county commissioner. And thank you for your service as delegates and thank you for taking it seriously. So what I like to do is tell you a little bit about me, what my qualifications are, what my experience is, what motivates me and some of my vision for the county. So first of all, my wife and I have nine kids and seven grandkids. I've been with Eagle Mountain City. I'm in my 11th year with Eagle Mountain City and currently in my second term as mayor. So one of the things that I'm seeing is that a lot of what Eagle Mountain experiences is very similar to what the county experiences. And so I can tell you about the things that we've done in Eagle Mountain, what's worked, what hasn't worked and what that means to all of us. So some of the things that motivate me is, well, first of all, I'm, I would call myself a constitutional originalist. So I believe that the founders got it right. So it's vital, especially in Utah County, I think, that we adhere to those principles because those are the conservative principles that will guide us through whatever it is we need to face. So one of the stories that inspired me as mayor is about another mayor. His name was, I'll probably butcher this a little bit, but Kotaku Wamura. He was the mayor of Fudai, Japan. And he grew up during World War II and experienced those hardships. But he was also a student of history. I like to think of myself as a student of history too because I like to know what, you know, what has happened in our history so that we can learn from it, some of the things we want to preserve and what we don't want to repeat. So one of the things that concerned him is in Japan, they have seawalls because they have occasional tsunamis there. And they have a standard height that they generally build those seawalls. But in studying history, he learned that every hundred years or so, there are monster tsunamis that come along. And he wanted to protect his city, not just against the average tsunamis, but against those monster tsunamis. So he advocated for building a seawall twice as high as what was common. And as you can imagine, he took a little bit of flak for that, a little bit of heat because there was some expense to it, right? Well, fast forward to 2011 when a giant tsunami hit the coast of Japan. Well, the only coastal city that remained undamaged was the city of Fudai. Now, Mayor Wamura had since passed away, so he never, he never saw the results of his work. But you could go to the cemetery and spot his grave immediately because it was the one that was covered in mounds of flowers. So his measures that he took, though, you know, he was probably called the crazy mayor, but in the end, people understood the importance of those preparations. Now, I believe that Utah County will experience some tsunamis, if you will, of our own. We know there are a lot of things out in the world that are not pleasant that are coming our way. Everything from, you know, inflation, national debt, some very sketchy individuals crossing our border, hacking into all of our water systems, our power grid, inflation, I mean, you name it. There are, you know, another pandemic. Who knows? What I would like to see for Utah County is for us to be prepared for what comes along. And I believe that being Utah County resident and knowing and feeling how special this area is and how unique the individuals are here, that we have the responsibility, this is our day to lead, to be the example. So we are told that it won't be long and will be as large as Salt Lake County. What will that look like? Will we be Salt Lake County? How will we respond and prepare? Well, we already know that we're a little bit behind the game, particularly on areas of transportation and in some of our planning. So we're trying to play catch-up across the board, whether it's roads, whether it's water, whether it's power, whether it's housing, whether it's open space and agriculture. So we know that Utah County has the highest agricultural receipts of any county in the state, but we're also the fastest growing. So those two things are in conflict. What will be the end result? So we have to look at the quality of life, you know, what is the vision that we want Utah County to be? What, you know, what do we want this place to look like, you know, as we continue to live here and our kids grow up here? What kind of experience will they have? Well, let me share with you some of the things that we have done in Eagle Mountain with these very same concerns. So one of the first things I did as mayor is I set out to protect open space as much as I possibly could because I knew that the land values were going up. It wasn't going to get easier, so I didn't want to kick that can down the road. That's been a theme for my administration at Eagle Mountain as we've been willing to take on the hard things and not simply kick them down the road for somebody else to deal with. So we set out to protect this open space. I was told that it can't be done because we can't afford to buy the land and we are conservatives, so we're not going to take it. It's, would probably be illegal anyway, even if we attempt it. So what are you, what are you going to do? What's left? Well, all of my background is marketing and business development. So I relied on that training and those instincts to share with the landowners and developers my vision for Eagle Mountain and the importance of it. Because we have a lot of families in Eagle Mountain, same as in Utah County. We raise a lot of kids, same as in Utah County. And if anybody's going to do families right and raise children right, it better be Utah County because if we don't do it right, we've really fallen short of our calling. So I believe that this open space was critical to our culture and our values and for raising children because our kids have to get out and get dirty and skin their knees and experience agriculture, learn how to work on a farm, learn how to admire and learn and protect our wildlife and everything that nature has to teach us. So as a result, even though these were often very difficult conversations, the landowners and developers, many of them are just like you and I. They believe those same things. They have those same values and they said, you know what? You are right. Let's figure out how to do this. So there wasn't any one size fits all, but we used every tool that we could find in the toolbox. Everything from, some landowners bought into their vision so much and realized they wanted to leave a legacy and they gave me more land than I was even asking for because they saw that vision. Other developers built it into their development. Other times, well, we've got, we've got a developer that changed the name of his development to Deer Haven because we preserved a deer migration route that went through our city. And so when he sells a house, it becomes a selling point that people can see, if they buy a house there, they can see the deer go by. So not only did we believe that it was the right ethical, moral thing to do, but as a conservative principle, we always, we also believed it was the best business decision too because it's all about quality of life. People, that's, those are the kind of places that people want to live in and raise their kids, where they have outdoor recreation, where they've preserved wildlife. And so in Eagle Mountain, we've been able to protect over 6,500 acres of open space, parks, trails and open space. I don't know of any other city that's done that. We did it all without using any tax dollars and without any takings, simply because we had a vision that people valued and appreciated. The other side of that is if we're going to keep taxes low, if we're going to deal with inflation, if we're going to make our families more resilient for whatever hard times, we need to strengthen our economy. We've got to have good jobs. We've got to have other revenue streams coming into city and county coffers other than just your property tax. Because if we rely on only property tax, we can say, well, we spend it way better than the Democrats do, but are we really any different than tax and spend? So I like to think of my position not as a bureaucrat, not someone that just manages money well, but someone that is your fiduciary in maximizing the returns on your investment. Because that's really what we're doing. We're investing for our quality of life. We're investing for the future, investing for the life of our kids. And so as a result, in Eagle Mountain, we've been able to bring in billions of dollars worth of value. So I've already been bringing additional money into the county coffers with our efforts in Eagle Mountain. So we even did a, you know, one of the things we talked about was how are we going to maintain our identity? our identity, right, and our values? So we even did a rebranding in Eagle Mountain. So our old branding was pretty much designed to sell houses, and we decided we don't need to sell houses anymore. So we rebranded as a high-quality place to live, where there's outdoor recreation and wildlife, that identifies, you know, protecting those views, protecting our mountains, protecting our values. One of the examples I like to use, and think about this as you think about Utah County and what Utah County needs to be. If you go to Hawaii, is there any question about what you do there? You know what you're supposed to do when you go to Hawaii, right? Do people know what they're supposed to be when they come to Utah County? Do they know what the expectations are? Do they know what our values are? Do they know what makes us unique? I believe that that's really important. So as we grow, as we become bigger than Salt Lake County, I believe that our destiny, our responsibility is to take leadership in this state. So too many times, I have heard from relatives and people outside of the state about some liberal policy that comes through Salt Lake, and they say, what is happening with Utah? What's going on there? And I say, well, that's Salt Lake, that's not us. But why? Has anybody ever felt kind of second fiddle or stepchild in the state? Does that need to be? No, it doesn't need to be. So as the state, you know, as the mayor of Eagle Mountain, oftentimes, I hear from the state, well, we need more housing, we need more housing, there's a housing shortage. What are we going to do about that? And so Eagle Mountain is geographically the largest city in the county. So we're a big chunk of the county already. By population, we're fourth largest. And so we tell the state, that's fine, we'll build houses, but let us do it our way. Because I'm a federalist, I believe that the best decisions are made at the lowest level possible, not from the top down, but from the bottom up. But you have to be bold, we can't be afraid. We can't say just, oh, those developers are bad, and we don't want them around here, or we don't want to plan because it's scary, because we have to have a vision for the future. But that's on us. If we fail to do that, then we'll just be the victims of whatever we get. And that's not what I want to happen. I believe that we can design it and plan it and execute it without the state telling us what to do. So now, I tell the state, if you want houses, give us roads. If you want housing to be more affordable, then let us do it our way. And some of the ways that we've done it in Eagle Mountain, just some of the examples, there's no, I don't like one-size-fits-all, I like lots of tools in the toolbox, because there's kind of a craft here to this. And you have to know how to use each one of those tools, and when to use them, and where to use them, and how to use them well. So for example, one of the things that our community likes, that's worked really well to help with making housing more affordable, is the ADU. And essentially what that is, is we've worked with developers, so that they go ahead and, a lot of times, you know, when a house is built, the basement is unfinished. Well, what they're doing in this case is they're finishing the basement and making it ready to live in. So it could be rented out, or, you know, additional family, whether it's adult children or grandparents can live there. That does a few things right away without government messing with it. So the home buyer is able to afford that home that they wouldn't normally be able to afford because they have additional income with the renter. And the renter, whoever they are, you know, maybe they're not quite ready to buy a house, but it gives them a place to live that's not high-density housing, and it's still a nice neighborhood for their, you know, to raise their families in, so that they have a starting place as they save money to prepare to purchase a home. So another factor is, in economic development, we build into it that these companies contribute to affordable housing. For flexible programs, there's no, again, no one tool, but one of the things that we have used is, we certainly want to assist people that are really contributors to our communities, you know, teachers, firefighters, police officers, et cetera. And so with that money, we can give them down payment assistance, or we can buy down a rate. So we have lots of flexibility that can be built into our economic development that doesn't overwhelm the system. Because one of the issues, like with Eagle Mountain, we're already growing pretty fast. I mean, we're one of the fastest-growing cities around. So we don't want to just pour gasoline on that and just simply make it cheaper, but we want to pick and choose, we want to use that authority judiciously to strengthen our society and community, because what we want to do, ultimate, so right now, Eagle Mountain is unique because it's 80% single-family. I don't know too many cities that can claim that, especially the size of Eagle Mountain. So we know we're going to need all kinds of products in the housing market, everything from starter to retirement and everything in between, because, and let me tell you why this is important, because we want to plan our communities with a family focus. And what I mean by that is, as our kids grow up, we want them to stay close if they can. We don't want them to have to move to another state just to find something affordable, because that, we can't give the support, right? So parents with adult children can, you know, help raise their grandchildren and give their kids guidance, and as grandparents mature and maybe need a little assistance, we can keep that close. Strengthening those families geographically is going to be important to our community in facing whatever it is we face. Because yes, we have to have strong families, we have to raise durable kids, and we have to be creative in our approach to that. So with that, so, how much time?
Eleven and a half minutes.
Okay, so we still have a little bit of time. So I felt like I've rambled a little bit, I probably left some stuff out, but let's go to questions, yes?
Okay, we've had many talks before you, and they talked about the budget and how to cut the budget. Are you, as a county commissioner, willing to lower your salaries?
Well, that's kind of abstract there, can we kind of zero in on that? So it...
They did have an increase the last two years.
Okay.
I get enough with that question.
Go ahead, what do you got?
We're over budget, and Skyler talked about looking at departments and scaling that. So one of them, they got a huge raise, they went from 119 to 169. So would you be willing, if you're in that spot, to reduce it and be that first cut?
Well, yes, but let me give you more to that story, because there's got to be rhyme and reason here, right? There's, so...
The question was, is he willing to cut down on his old salary since we're having budget issues?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay, so in Eagle Mountain, we have staff salary issues. This is nothing new, this is nothing new. All of us are being squeezed by inflation, right? And government is no different, you have to make adjustments. Now, what we do in Eagle Mountain, I think, applies really well in this case. So what we do is, we do market studies and we do indexing. So salaries aren't arbitrary. So I think one of my issues with where we are currently with that salary, with the county commissioner level, is, as far as I know, is arbitrary. So what I would like to see is indexing and market studies, that might sound complicated, it's really not. It becomes a mathematical formula, where you want to hit at a certain rate, and we can discuss that formula, yes?
So you get to vote in your salary or pay raise. Your employees do not, you get to dictate what they get. So what we're asking is, we want to make sure, just because you can vote your own salary, because how many people love to vote their own salaries?
Yeah, right.
So will you be responsible and say, hey, that, and I believe they probably did an indexing, but they may have indexed it against Texas or Colorado or somewhere else.
Yeah, maybe.
But we don't know that, but with that being said, you still voted, they still voted that in, we don't get that opportunity.
Right, well, that's, see, that needs to be out in the open, whatever that indexing is, and it needs to make sense, and then we can look at it and say, look, it's either too high, too low, whatever it may be, but, yes.
So that was actually done, they compared to Davis, they compared to other counties, they said, oh, we need to be closer to that. But Skyler brought up a good point, we were at 119, that was a huge jump for a conservative state. But I mean, leadership needs, right? Because look at what Trump did, he didn't take, yes, he had money, but he should have taken more money, and he said, no.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you this, I'm not in this for the money. I'm in it for the passion, I'm in it to get something done, okay? I don't make much as mayor, okay? So this is not a big issue. Let's go here first.
Why do you want to switch from mayor to commissioner, and are you a career politician?
Okay, okay, am I, okay, why do I want to move from Eagle Mountain City as mayor to a county commission, and am I a lifetime politician? I didn't even plan to be mayor. It just happened because I just went to serve. And I dedicated myself to serving the people, and they made me mayor. It was not a plan. I hadn't even, so I've only even considered coming to the county just the last few months, but because I began to see the needs at the county and how much they mirrored Eagle Mountain, and I thought, you know what, I'm already doing a lot of this, I'm already working with the sheriff and the sheriff's department, I'm already doing that budget, I'm already working with the fire department, we're already protecting open space, we're already doing economic development, we're already protecting open space, these are things that I think need to come to the county. So, hey, I'm 60, I'm going to be 68 this year, I'm not planning on doing this for a long time, right? So, no, I, does that answer your question? I don't feel like, I'm around as long as I can do some good, other than that, yes?
I think for a lot of people, at least for me, it is a big issue, the salary of the commissioners, and so I just wanted to get a firm answer from you. Will you, do you right now think it is too high, yes or no, and is this something that you would work to reduce?
Okay, so emotionally, yes. Intellectually, I haven't looked at the indexing, what that is. Is there a particular, is there something we're trying to hit?
Well, we're talking about, they got a $50,000 pay raise in, you know, in two years, nobody else is able to...
Okay, well, is there, I mean, is there a number? I mean, like, what?
Over budget.
Yeah, well, the budget, okay, I get that. I see the budget issue, and this is two different things, so, I mean...
To help the budget, would you be willing to help reduce that salary?
Oh, I totally agree, but, okay, I'm a businessman, okay? Yeah, when you need to make cuts, you make cuts, right? But is that why we're here? No, I'm here to make, bring money into the county and offset that, because, again, I don't want to be a tax-and-spend bureaucrat, that's not what I'm about. I want to increase those coffers and take that pressure off of your backs. So, yeah, I'm willing to, like, I haven't heard a number, but yeah, I'm, like, that's not...
119.
You want 119?
Go back to what it was until we can balance it.
I'll tell you what, can I look at that and get back to you, is that fair? Because I want it to make sense. Again, I don't want to make the same mistake that may have been made before, just pull a number out of the air and say, okay, that sounds like a great number. I want it to be based on something. Five minutes, okay, yes?
How are you doing?
How am I doing?
Actually, I'm just going to work on it. So do you like the current format of three commissioners, and if you were going to change it or suggest a change, how would you change it?
Okay, so I think, well, we've seen some awkwardness already.
You can ask the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, do I like the current form of government, and would I change it?
Would you change it or suggest a change?
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. So right now, we have three commissioners, right? And we're already seeing some, I mean, with three, that can be kind of awkward, and now we kind of have a man down, right? Nothing, like, I feel really bad for Tom Sakovich, and I hope the best for him, and I trust that whatever decision he makes will be in his best interests, and I wish him the best. But yeah, we're a man down, right? So it's awkward. So I can tell you, in the past, I like to use my record, because then I'm not just talking arbitrary, so I actually signed on to an effort to look at a five-member commission a while back. So, because I suspect that we might need, you know, if we're going to keep growing, which that's what we're told, I suspect that we may need some additional bodies there. So I'm quite willing to look closely at that.
There's about three minutes left, there was a gentleman over here with the hand over.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I was switching gears real quick, public safety, Utah County's 2,000 square miles. We are becoming a major drug corridor with fentanyl, methamphetamine, heroin, and it's not just coming through Utah, it's staying, a lot is starting to stay. What could, we got some ideas to help Mike Smith at the sheriff's department, I know there's drug money available on forfeiture, asset forfeiture monies are available to the county task forces. What could we do to, as a commissioner, do to help increase his budget, because this problem's getting bigger?
Yeah, okay, so the question is, so we're a large county, crime, the crime issues are weighing down on us, right, whether it's drugs or whatever. And so we want to make sure our law enforcement and our courts are well-funded, right? So, again, there's not a one-size-fits-all, but there's lots of tools that we need to make sure we're hitting. We need to make sure we're getting all the grants that we can get. I'm pretty confident that we're not, and I'm not, that's not saying, I'm not saying anyone's doing it wrong, I just, I'm confident that there are more grants there to have. And also, yeah, so I work with Sheriff Smith, we have, you know, a substation out in Eagle Mountain to help patrol all of that area, so, and that is a win-win, that's an example of a win-win. We're actually, Eagle Mountain is saving money, and the county is saving money because of that arrangement. So economic development helps in that regard. If we can bring in more revenues, strengthen our economy, then we'll have more money to work with all the way around. How are we doing, or we probably just got there?
We've got one minute left, so right here.
I'd like to ask one, I live in Lehigh, and I've heard to say you were two years in mayor, and then you said that if they want more houses, they need more transportation. So if you've been in Lehigh for two, or you've been in Eagle Mountain for two terms, why, what have you done to get more transportation to Eagle Mountain before all those moments came in? It doesn't have to be early.
Yeah, so I brought more road funding into Eagle Mountain than anyone ever has. And so even SR-73 right now currently is shovel-ready, and the state is telling us they're just on the verge of funding it. So I lobbied for Mountain View Corridor, all that's, it's coming. Government does move painfully slow, I get that, but that's part of the relationship, yeah, with cities, county, and state.
They have all the right-of-way for the SR-73.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, we're getting, buying even more right-of-way for the extension of that Cedar Valley Freeway that will go all the way through Cedar Valley and eventually wrap around the lake.
You've got 20 seconds.
Okay, quickly, back here.
He's got 20 seconds left.
20 seconds. Who has a question?
Oh.
Oh, okay, one quick question, yes?
What about the bridge?
The bridge! I always know when we're about the end of a meeting when we start talking about a bridge. That's the distinction, I've been in so many meetings where, you know, transportation, we start talking about a bridge, I know this is about over. So we may have, have to have a bridge eventually, that's why I'm working through, you know, looping it around the lake first, but yeah, there's my...
There you go. Sorry, guys, time's up. So this was Tom Westmoreland. We're going to hear now from Diane Garcia. Just to recap, I had a couple people ask me, they came in late, we've heard from Andrew Jackson, we've heard from Skyler Beltran, Tom Westmoreland, and then now we'll hear from Diane. She'll, no, 30 minutes, and same format, she'll have those 30 minutes to do with it, whatever she wants, and we're going to get started.
Well, it's good to be here, wish we had a mic, hopefully, can you guys hear me in the back? Okay. I will try to talk loud, but Tuesday night at the Provo Library, kind of did my voice in with having to talk so loud for so long, so hopefully you can all hear me. So I'm Diane Garcia, and I am running for Utah County Commission, seat C. I was born in Utah, but when I wasn't in... born in Utah, but when I was an infant, our family moved to California. Yes, California. People are like, oh, you're one of those that moved here. Well, I moved back here. So, I lived in California and then moved back to, moved to Cedar City when, when I got divorced and me and my three children moved back. And I attended Southern Utah University to get my degree in agriculture. So, I grew up in the Imperial Valley of California, which is right on the Mexican border. And it is all agricultural fields, huge agricultural fields, as far as the eye can see, for miles and miles. So, I have a love for agriculture. And my, my dad grew up in Spanish Fork. My mom grew up in Heber. And we would spend our summers up here because my dad was a college professor. So, so we did spend time up here. And when I was trying to figure out where I was going to move my, my three children and me, I knew I needed to come back to Utah. So, that's what we did. After getting my degree at SUU, I moved back here to Spanish Fork and started managing my historical family farm that's been in our family since 1852. And, and then I started working for the county. I work in the assessors department. I've worked there for 19 years. I am the farmland assessment analyst. So, I get to deal with all of the farmers and ranchers and all of the land throughout the whole county. Whether it's in the county or whether it's in a city, I get to deal with those landowners. So, in the process of doing my job, I, I deal with developers. I deal with title companies, real estate agents, different cities. There, there are quarters in the city. And I have over 9,000 parcels that just me take care of. So, for many years, our department has asked for an increase in our budget so that they could hire an assistant or someone else to help me. But that has been turned down consistently. So, it is all on me to do all of that. So, what does that entail? So, when someone applies for the Farmland Assessment Act, which is Green Belt, they have to complete an application. The application places a lien on their property. So, they, they place this lien and they farm it. They have to show that they are meeting certain levels of agricultural production that are set by the state. This is a state law that the county administers. All counties within the state of Utah administer this law. So, my job is to make sure that these landowners are meeting the minimum agriculture production requirements to get this tax benefit. So, you wonder, what could, what could that tax benefit be? Well, it is unique for each parcel. Some parcels would be paying $60,000 if they weren't on Green Belt. And on Green Belt, their taxes are less than 10. Okay? So, it sometimes can be very significant. So, my job is to make sure they meet the requirements. I take that seriously. I've been doing it for 19 years. I have to tell people, no, that they can't get the, they can't get the benefit because they're not meeting the requirement. I get yelled at. I get threatened. I get told, well, I'm going to go talk to Commissioner so-and-so, and then I'll get it. And many times, they do get it because they, they bypass me. I'm the gatekeeper for that. And, and I feel it is important because when someone gets a benefit, it shifts the taxes to the rest of us. If it's a program that's a law, it's a state law, then they should get it if they meet the requirements. And if they don't meet the requirements, they should not get it, and we should be able to say no. Now, I have some examples of what, examples of what have happened with that. We, we sometimes kind of joke in my office that, that Diane turns lots of land into agricultural land in our county. And the reason that happens is because we get developers who buy land, and then they want this benefit, right? They want to keep the taxes as low as possible until they start building homes on it. And then they pass on that rollback to the, to the new buyers of those homes. So, whenever a property no longer qualifies for Green Belt, there is a five-year rollback bill that has to be paid to release that lien that is on the property. So, that rollback could be a couple of thousand dollars. It could be $800,000. And so, some people are highly motivated to not have to pay that. So, it's my job to make sure that the law is applied equally and fairly. So, we had a property owner in, it's the north end up in Lehigh, and they applied for Green Belt, and I denied them because there was nothing happening on the property. It was just weeds, grasses growing. There was nothing happening. They appealed it and they lost with the county commissioners. This was a few years ago, not the current commission. And, and they were upset, but they still wanted the benefit. So, what did they do? They found a farmer who was willing to lease their land, and he started using it. And in order to get the benefit, they had to prove that they'd been doing it for two years. So, it turned that land into what was vacant, non-used land into productive land. And, and so, they were able to get that benefit because they met the requirements. And I have, in the past eight years, nine years, there has been a trend where, well, let me, let me explain to you. Some people may not know that there is, so the county commissioners have their regular county commission meetings, right? And they have the agenda. Skylar talked about, they have the agenda. They move things to consent. There's things they do there, right? But then they also serve on the Board of Equalization. On the Board of Equalization, they wear like a different hat. They're not the commissioners. They're the Board of Equalization. And it's a quasi-judicial board. So, it's kind of like their judges. So, there's different requirements and different codes of conduct that need to be adhered to. So, when someone comes before the county Board of Equalization, they're appealing some decision that was made from the county, usually that affected their taxes. So, that could be someone who applied for an abatement, and they were denied because their income was too high, and they're fighting that and arguing that. Or they, they were late on their appeal. They, they didn't appeal their valuation in time, and they have an excuse. And so, they want them to open it up so that they can hear their valuation question. So, Green Belt is one of those that falls in that category, and that happens a lot. So, lately, the commissioners have been granting this Green Belt exemption, this reduction, to a lot of people that come before them, asking to, to not go with what Diane says and then just give it to us. And they give it to them. In the past, that happened very rarely, and we would never appeal it. But lately, over the past eight years, the assessor's office has started to appeal those decisions because we feel that it is our responsibility to protect your taxpayer dollars and to not give it away to someone who doesn't earn it or meet the requirements. So, what happens when you go to the Board of Equalization and you go before the county commissioners as their quasi-judicial hat, then if you, if you get granted, then the assessors or the auditor's office can appeal your decision to the State Tax Commission. If you get denied by the Board of Equalization, then you can appeal to the State Tax Commission. So, it's equal, an equal appeals process. So, the, the county assessors has been appealing the Board of Equalization's decisions to the State Tax Commission, and we have been winning about 90% of the time. And these are significant cases because that's the ones we're passionate about, that we cannot let your taxpayer dollars go to a developer who is just holding that land and not using it while you're trying to pay your, your taxes and your mortgages. Your mortgages go up when your taxes go up, right? Because it has to go into escrow. So, so I take that very seriously. When, when I do that, again, I get, I'm in the hot seat. I have to stand before the commissioners, and I have to present evidence, and I have to say why it does not qualify. I get ridiculed. I get yelled at. I get threatened from time to time, and I still stand my ground and say it doesn't qualify. So, after doing that for 19 years, I can stand my ground and I can say no, even if someone is yelling at me. I don't purposely instigate the problem or issue. I am just following the law. And I think that we need someone to follow the law. Why am I running for a commissioner? So, like I said, over the past 19 years, I have seen commissioners come and go. I have seen commissioners that are effective, and I have seen commissioners that are less effective. And I felt it was time that we needed a commissioner who would just follow the law and protect your taxpayer dollars, protect your private property rights, and, and not bend to, to these pressures of, of other people who are trying to get this benefit without meeting the requirements. So, so I've, I've heard, you know, through some of these meet and greets, some people have said, well, you just know agriculture. So, you don't know how to serve the whole county. You just know agriculture. Well, I'll have you know that there is several national studies that show that farmers are the most trusted profession that, that exists in our country. And some of that is because being in agriculture and being an advocate for agriculture, you engage in topics like private property rights, water rights and conservation, protecting natural resources, gun rights and ownership, government mandates and regulation, government overreach, which I myself experienced on my own property, taxes, food safety and security, freedom of speech, animal rights and stewardship, immigration, high cost of fuel, trade, interest rates, economic stability. So, goes on and on and on. So, being in agriculture, I, I do deal with a lot of these issues and even more. The other criticism that, that I've received is that I live in Spanish Fork. And so, I can't represent the north end or the west end as effectively as, as someone that lives there. So, having worked for the county for 19 years, I can tell you that I deal with the whole county. I'm traveling this whole county. I'm talking to residents of this whole county all the time. So, I have the Redwood Road expansion that happened, maybe 10 years ago. I had to deal with those landowners that dipped below, they had eminent domain or threat of eminent domain for widening Redwood Road. Some of them didn't care. Some of them, it was a struggle for them. Many of them sold and moved to the south end of the county where they had more freedom to continue to do what they wanted to do. And so, I had to deal with them. There's a provision in the Green Belt law, the Farmland Assessment Act, that if you're under eminent domain or threat of eminent domain, and you dip below the acreage requirement, then you can still stay and get that benefit as long as you meet the production requirements. So, I worked with all those landowners over, over those issues and helped them work through that. I, I had somebody come out Tuesday night, and they were talking to me. They were either Highland or Alpine, but they said they're, they drive back and forth and they see that, that place where those longhorn cattle are. They want to know, why do those longhorn cattle there? And what's happening? What do they do? I said, well, I know who that landowner is. I know who's, who the lessee of those longhorn cattle are. And you don't have to have cattle on the property 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 12 months out of the year. It's all calculated on animal unit months. And I'm, I'm telling you that I make sure to the best of my ability that people are meeting that requirement. I tell people, if they don't like that law, it's not their choice to say, I'm not going to follow it. It's their responsibility to then go get that law changed. We cannot pick and choose what laws we're going to follow, but we can advocate, lobby, whatever word you want to use, to get laws changed. As a county commissioner, I think that that is something that they do and that they should do, and that they need to be aware of all the issues. So, you were talking about the form of government. So, so I have two, two things, maybe three things to say about that. One is, I believe that it should be set in state law that when a county meets a certain population, you automatically switch to that certain size of government, just like they were saying for cities. So, that would take all the whatever you want to say out of it, all the bickering, arguing, speculating, whatever. Second, I was not in favor of the previous five commissioners, geographically, two at large, part-time. Why do I say that? Because I have seen politicians, elected officials, when they are part-time, they are more open to serving themselves. So, say you have someone who works as a developer as their full-time job, but they're going to be a county commissioner part-time. What are their decisions going to be leaning towards? Okay? Because they need to make a living. The third thing is the $166,000 salary. So, my thought, when you guys were all asking these questions, was, yes, I'm applying for a job. Do I ever go to my, to my prospective employer and say, I'm applying for this job, and if I get it, will you please lower my salary? No, you usually don't do that. Okay? Do I think they should have raised their salary? No, I don't. Okay? But, but I'm applying for a job. I'm, I'm truthful. I'm honest. I'm applying for a job. Do I believe that, so I have some figures here. So, and before I forget, on my back table, I have the county budget, and it's very detailed, and you can look at it for questions that you have. I also have the health department information on who they serve and the programs that they have when they're referred to as the lowest hanging fruit. I disagree with that. So, the commission used to be six people. Three commissioners and three policy analysts assistants. Okay? It was assistants, and then they increased it to policy analysts, and they got a huge raise. Then, it went to eight people. Then, it went to nine people. And now, it's going to be 11 people under the umbrella of the commission right now. Why is that? If we're going to have 11, we might as well go to five full-time commissioners with assistants, and that would be 10. Okay? Instead of 11. So, so something to think about. Budget. So, I look at the budget as kind of three-pronged. I don't look at just, we're just going to go cut. Okay? I think farm. And I think, okay, when I'm like, ooh, I'm, I'm kind of squeaking in, I'm getting, you know, tight here with money on the farm. What am I going to do? Okay? Do I raise the price of my eggs? Do I raise the price of my beef? I certainly do not cut their feed. Okay? If I cut the feed to the chickens and expect them to do more with less, they're not going to do it. Because they need feed, good quality feed, to lay good quality eggs. So, the county's the same way. The county needs licensed, registered nurses in the health department. Are you going to pay them less than what they can get in the outside? If so, then they're going to be not as high of quality people. And do you want that when, when your kid is having a seizure at an elementary school and that nurse is not trained as well or as licensed as well? So, you want to think about those things because it will affect you, your neighbor, your family at some point in time. So, so just cutting the budget isn't the only answer. You can trim it. You can look at things, different requests. I use the example of this last go-around of the budget. The health department got denied a request, and that was for a van to keep their equipment where they go test the swimming pools for the crypto bacteria thing. And they were denied that. Now, do they have other equipment that they have to pick up and move into vehicles? Can they do it? Maybe. Will this make it so they don't get as many swimming pools checked? I don't know. So, a lot of these things need to be looked at and not just said to cut. The second thing for the budget is, don't give away other tax dollars. Make sure that all of these preferential tax programs, people are meeting the requirement to get that tax, that tax reduction, that tax rebate. So, obviously, we all would think, well, if you're a veteran and you're getting the veteran abatement, you would have shown that you had served in the military, right? It makes common sense. Okay? So, all of the other programs that maybe aren't as straightforward or as clear in our mind, we need to make sure they're meeting the requirements to get the benefit because we make up the difference. And then the third thing that I would look at for the budget is incre- is um, increasing tourism. Protecting our natural, um, resources so that people want to come here and vacation. Um, when we get a long weekend, we go down to St. George, right? Most of us, because we want the sun, right? But, we need to see if we can keep more dollars here, more sales tax dollars in our county, make it more attractive. Uh, Utah Lake's a big thing, we've got the canyons. Um, we've, we've got our farmland to protect. So, so there are things that make it, uh, attractive for people to come here and do things. We can have, um, I, I just sat through a commission meeting where they were talking about, um, uh, bowfishing. And there's a bowfishing competition on Utah Lake, where they come from all over and they shoot the carp with their bow and arrows in the lake. Um, I remember when they would have the marathon run around, they'd have the cyclists go up the canyon. There's a lot of things that we can bring to our county, and that we are bringing to our county, uh, but we can make it more attractive and bring those sales tax dollars to us, for us to use. Okay, uh, got a few minutes, I'll answer questions. We got about eight and a half minutes left, so. There's a question back there.
Um, I love how you're saying. Um, I love how you're saying that you want to make sure that we're holding up to the tax dollars that we should have. And um, one of the things that's really frustrating me is there's not as much people that are moving here from out of state, but people that are buying properties from out of state and they never lived here, but a lot of them are still getting the fifty-five percent property tax reduction. So they're getting that huge benefit and they never lived here, and I feel like that's a big tax that we could be receiving or benefiting us. Um, so what are your thoughts on that and any ways that we could enforce that, make sure that they're actually doing it?
Okay, so we actually have a person in the assessor's office who deals with that. They send out letters to all the landowners, and they have to say, certify, uh, sign their name, that that home is their primary residence. So for those who don't know, if, if a home is someone's primary residence, it doesn't have to be the owner of the land, but it's someone's primary residence, so you can rent it out, but someone has to live there at least a hundred and eighty-one days out of the year, then you get a forty-five percent reduction on that property. So, if your market value is this much, then on the actual taxable value, it is forty-five percent less. And it is the land and the home, any of the residential buildings. So yes, that does need to be um, strictly adhered to and monitored. And what does that entail? Does that entail maybe hiring another person? I don't know. One person can they handle all those, uh, properties throughout the whole county as the county grows? I don't know. But definitely, we need to make sure that people are not getting the benefit, um, if they're not meeting the requirements. The other thing is, we're getting a lot of Airbnbs, and Airbnbs should not get that residential exemption. So we have to, um, to, to find those Airbnbs. What do they do? We've got a team that looks, they go on Facebook and the internet, and they look through where people are advertising, where they have Airbnbs. So um, so yes, that, that is definitely something that we need to make sure that, um, people are meeting the requirements to get the benefit. That's just fair for everyone.
So, I also raise chickens, just to continue your metaphor. Um, as far as speaking, my chickens goes, I've noticed that if I feed them too much, the raccoons and the rats come to you. And uh, they, they, they make sure there's no feet hanging around, so it's not always obvious that they're getting too much. Uh, how would you?
So, so using that metaphor, I would use about, you know, having the feed tossed on the ground, right? That you are monitoring that feed and that you are making sure that only your chickens can get to that feed, you're doing those protections. And yes, that's, that's definitely what we would be doing, to try to keep the tax dollars here and to keep your taxes low. But I, but I'm telling you, when, when someone promises that your taxes are going to go down just because the county keeps their tax portion down, your taxes will probably not go down, because there's a whole other pie, piece of the pie, it's actually the whole other pie. The county gets a little sliver. Um, the school district gets the bulk of your tax dollars. But yet the county has to assess your property, they have to collect your taxes, they record the deeds when you transfer ownership or buy property, they do all that work, and they only get that little sliver to make that happen, in addition to the health department, the sheriff's department, um, all those other things. There was another hand.
Uh, you said, "We need a commissioner that will follow the law." How are they not following the law?
Because they, they give away your tax dollars. So when we go before them and we say, "These properties are not meeting the requirements," so all of these meetings are on YouTube, you can watch them, okay? So I'm going to reference one meeting, and you can, you can go find it and look for it, okay? It was a few months back, maybe five months back. And, a property owner came and asked for this green belt reversal. They wanted to get on green belt, I said they didn't qualify. The minute they started presenting their appeal, one of the commissioners said, "Well, I know him, he's my best friend, and I served with his brother as the mayor." What does that tell everybody else in that meeting? It tells them that they're not connected and they're not going to get the same favor. And that is wrong. That is not what you base that decision on, you base it on the law, not who you know. Anybody else? Oh!
Um, one, Skylar had mentioned that during COVID, the health department's budget had increased. So, but you seem to be applying, or implying that that's not, not the case for you, or is that something?
No, but, but, I have that back there, you can look at that, so that's good. But a lot of what the health department gets are grants, and they are time limited. And when you go on to the personnel, uh, like, uh, jobs that are posted with the county, you'll see a lot of health department stuff, and it'll say, "Time limited, no benefits." So they don't get health insurance, they don't get vacation, they don't get those things. It's a time limited because it's based on money that was given as a grant. So um, so if that answers your question, yes, during COVID and even a couple of years now, we've, we've gotten different grant money, and we always get grant money even before COVID. We're at two and a half minutes, any other questions?
I don't want this to be signaled the end of your time, but I just want to ask about the lake. Um, other people have, have said that they would make favor a bridge or a toll lane, um, if it were financially a good idea. How do you feel about that, not only from a financial standpoint, but perhaps an ecological standpoint, uh, coming from your background, as well as just water in general in our county?
I think it would be a bad idea. So I am not in favor of a bridge going across Utah Lake. I think ecologically, um, it would make the lake even worse than it is now. I think there's a lot of other things we can do to improve our lake and make it, uh, a higher quality and a place where, where people will want to recreate, right? I remember water skiing on Utah Lake and going along, and there's a big old floating algae thing, and I'm like, "Please don't let me crash now, please don't let me crash now." Because it's nasty, okay? So, um, definitely something that needs to be worked on. Um, as they look at the Great Salt Lake, it affects Utah Lake as well. So it is not just a Utah County problem, it is something that the whole state is working on. One minute left.
Yeah, you mentioned that the assessor's office is not, that the forty-five percent tax reduction is not being addressed by the assessor's office. What percent of houses that are getting the forty-five percent should not be doing it?
Okay, I did say that we weren't doing it, we are doing it. We have a, one person that is in charge of making sure that happens. I don't know the percentage of who's getting it, who shouldn't. Um, obviously, that's a, a moving target all the time as properties change ownership. So it is always something that we need to be vigilant about, to make sure that they only get that reduction if it is their primary residence.
So you're saying if someone rents out their basement, then no longer is the problem anywhere?
No, no, you can, you can rent out your basement. We're saying that it, it can't be like a short-term rental like an Airbnb. So if you're renting it and it's somebody's primary residence, because a lot of people live in rentals. So if you are renting it and you live there for a hundred and eighty-one days, then it is your primary residence. So yes, you can get that residential exemption. All right, guys, I'm sorry, we're at time, so. All right, we are really close to being done. We have Jay Ugarte here, so we're going to hear from him for thirty minutes. Again, the time is his, he can do with it whatever he wants. Um, we're going to get start, oh, here he is. All right, we're going to give him his thirty minutes, and then after that, we're going to see if we have some time left to have you guys mingle with the candidates. All right, Jay, time's yours.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, how are you guys doing? Before I say anything, I'd just like to make sure everybody here is Republican. I'm sorry, I said, I just want to make sure that everybody in the room here is Republican. Because I may or may not take your questions if you're not. I'm sorry?
In name only?
In name only? I won't go into that, but yes. Well anyways, my name's Jay Ugarte, and uh, let me tell you a little bit about me. Um, I uh, hope that uh, by sharing a little bit about myself, we can uh, find some common ground and maybe even spark connection. You know, for the time being, we are complete strangers, I understand that. Uh, I grew up in West Valley, and a lot of people are saying, "Oh my gosh, I feel bad for you already." Right? But, it's not, it's not as bad as it is. Uh, people ask me, "Uh, what's your background?" Well, I'm Latino. And then they're like, "Well, no, no, where are you from?" Well, I'm from Santaquin, you know? Santaquin is located south of us, and down in the southern part of our great Utah County. Uh, for me, Santaquin holds a very special place in my heart. Santaquin's been a place I've called home for over eighteen years. It's been a journey watching Santaquin and our Utah County evolve, seeing both of the challenges and the opportunities that have come with growth. But amidst of it all, one thing remains constant, the sense of, of our community that binds us together. Um, family, for me, family is everything. Uh, we are a clan of seven, and we're a very tight-knit bunch who find joy in each other's company. Uh, as a profession, I, I've done a little bit of everything, from finance to real estate, and I've also dipped my toes in a little bit of, uh, everything else, like in e-commerce and whatnot. But, I also want to express my profound love and respect for the US Constitution, which serves as the bedrock of our democracy. In particular, I hold dear the principles enshrined in the First, Second, and our Fourth Amendments. These rights are not just words on a page, they are pillars of our freedom and must be safeguarded at all cost. I've seen firsthand the challenges we have faced here in Santaquin and Utah County, but I've also seen the resilience and the strength of our community. And that's why I'm here today to lend my voice and my passion to the cause of building a brighter future together. And, a little bit of why I am running. Um, I like to share this, not in the sense as a candidate, but as a neighbor and a fellow citizen, and, and someone who deeply cares about our future and our community. Through my life, I've seen a lot of driven and profound, uh, belief in the power of community. I've seen firsthand how a unified vision, shared conservative values, and dedicated individuals can transform neighborhoods into vibrant spaces where everyone has the opportunity to, to thrive. Um, I stand firmly that, uh, we together can channel that. My hope for a better Utah County is to continue to uphold our family values, the US Constitution and Utah Constitution. The Republican Party, limited government, personal property rights, responsible spending, balanced budget, government transparency, responsible growth, and a formula to conserve our natural resources, our farmlands, our lakes, our orchards. And again, responsible progress in subs- substanti- my mouth is so dry, I can't even say that. Substantiability. I have vision of, uh, a place where every voice is heard, where diversity is celebrated, and where no one is left behind. As commissioner, I would work tirelessly to ensure that our policy programs reflect these values. Now I. It's about putting the needs of our community, our community, of all else and hardworking, above, above, and working tirelessly to meet those needs. If elected, I pledge to serve with integrity, compassion, and dedication. Always mindful of the trust you have placed in me. So, as we embark on this journey together, I ask for your support, your input, and your partnership. Together, let us shape a better Utah County. And all out, and call home. Now, I'm just going to open up to questions. I don't want to continue to feed you with numbers and processes and. But, if you have specific questions that you have, and I know it's, it's getting late, it's seventeen after, I want to keep you more with the timeline that we have, and I know we've been sitting here for a long time. So, do you guys have any questions? Yes, sir?
What has been your occupation recently?
My occupation recently has been, I buy fix and hold homes. So I have rentals. That's what I do. Yes, ma'am?
So, I, uh, heard that Google you the other day, that you have, um, ran for some Utah House Representatives, uh, a few years, a few times. So, why switch to county commissioner?
My taxes six years ago were about eighteen hundred dollars, roughly right now they're hitting about thirty-three hundred dollars. So it just seems interesting to me that money's coming in, but where is it really going out? Right? I mean, you, you, I know that the sheriff is one of the big portions, and so is education. So we really have to study how we can work and continue to do the progressive spending on a fiscal conservative spending matter. Now, education, I believe in education. I, I think that our children deserve to be educated and be trained so they're able to compete, not just at local or state or national level, but at a global stage. But at the same time, why are we building Taj Mahal's? Do we really need marble flooring? So we really have to look at how we are able to progress, but being responsible. Yes?
So, where the school district has their portion of money, and you would be in charge of the county, which is the smallest portion, why did you go from this position, which is the smallest piece of the pie, versus one of the larger ones?
Well, to answer the question, it was based on how we can look at how we can budget and see where we are spending most of the money.
I think he's asking, why don't you, to the school board, figure out how to get their spending under control?
Right, so for that, we would need to also communicate and see what we need to figure out. Yes, sir?
I have a question, I have a point, uh, out of all the commissioners, you're the only one that's getting signatures to be put on the primary ballot.
Thank you for asking that. I think that the main reason why I did it is because when I was serving as a delegate and also as a state delegate, I think most of the other delegates that I got a chance to talk to, were not really vetting exactly what our candidates were doing. And the reason why I decided to put on theirs is to see if most of the delegates would take the time to see what are we doing, how are we moving forward, and why are we doing what we're doing? So to answer your question is to have you ask me really that question. Because I want people to know that the only way we can really elect individuals who are what they say they are, is based on how we vet them. So, yes.
So are you actively gathering?
So are you actively gathering or do you just follow?
No, no, not at all, not at all. I have not done any of it. No, I think the caucus system is one of the best systems we have. Yes, it has its positives and negatives, but ultimately, this allows us to represent our community. This allows us to be able to connect on a direct basis with these candidates. Yes, sir? I, I'm against it simply because the fact that it allows for more bureaucracy, it allows for more growth of government, and the less government that is involved in our lives, the better. Salt Lake tried it, their budget went increasingly way higher, and I don't think they've managed or improved anything in what they ordinarily wanted to improve. So the less government we have in our lives, the better.
Another thing that's been asked, and most of these, I applaud that too, is about salary increase. Would you, if elected, would you support reducing that, cutting it back to the previous amount or lower amount or be as fine as it is?
Look, as a private individual, I work completely on commission. If I don't perform, when I buy a home, if I don't budget it out, I eat my shorts. So if I don't perform, I'm being able to understand my own budget and be able to know my numbers and understand my finances, I eat my shorts. So I disagree with having you to increase your salary when you're not really performing any more than what you already are getting paid for. So, no, I don't agree with the twenty nineteen, I believe it was, pay increase that they did and recently the pay increase that, that was kinda self-voted into. So, yes, ma'am?
How do you see that the county government, specifically commissioners, could make a more efficient government to still get the job done and yet cut back on how much government is involved in our lives? What does that look like?
What is, how do I see the three seats that represent our county? Is that what you're asking me?
Well, you were, you were saying that you believed in limited government, less government, that our lives are better if we have less government involved.
Right.
Involvement, but there has to be some, and the less government, the more efficient government, I would think would be the solution, but I'm, I'm asking, looking at the situation as it now is, where can we improve on the county level, which would involve the commissioners' decision-making skills and ability? Where do we, where do we need to improve? What can we done, what can be done?
I think the best way I can answer that question is to, to say that, look, government was really just placed to protect its citizens, it was never in place to rule their lives. And so, the more we are expanding our government, the more they are gonna be into your pocket. Yes? I think that's something that- Well, I think that if we work together as a community, it would allow us to get the input from you, instead of making it the input from the governing bodies and telling you, "Hey, this is how we're gonna do with your land," or "This is where we're gonna part, and this is how we're gonna divide, and this is what we're gonna bring you to accept." Yes?
So we've had a lot of examples, and people, so Scottler served in different communities, and same thing with Garcia, Diane. Tell us some examples of how you have been serving in a role capacity where you've served the city, the county, give us some hard examples, this is not a job to learn of the job, right? We're gonna need some with experience. So give us some examples of how you have been able to be in that kind of a role.
No, I think you're right. I am not one saying, nor have I stated that I am, one of, one of my favorite quotes that I like is from my favorite president, which is Ronald Reagan. At one time, he said in one of his presentations was that, "If anybody comes to you that says that has experience and is from the government and is here to help you, I'd run the other way." I'm not representing that I have any experience in the government area. I do have a lot of experience in the private sector to be able to budget in it from ten to hundred to even a million plus budgeting. And that's one of the things that I think in the government body, we need to start focusing on. It doesn't take a rocket science to be able to quickly adapt and learn. It does not take somebody to figure out, for example, I know you guys mentioned earlier with some of these gentlemen, I'm not gonna isolate them, the corridor that's from the freeway to Cerro Torres Springs. Originally, it should have been looked at maybe being a complete freeway. Now, all of a sudden, it's being re-figure out, reconfigure out to be into a full-on freeway. So MAP is looking to expand eight hundred feet, which, yeah, that may be a possible solution, but what about the people who are living next to that corridor, whose homes are gonna be taken? Has that been considered? Has that been brought to their attention? Another issue that I think was huge here in our side of the county, the Spanish Fork inland port that was also, in my opinion, completely rushed. We were sold on the fact that we're gonna bring this infrastructure that's gonna create jobs, it's gonna create more economy and whatnot, but did we take in consideration the air pollution, the traffic, the congestions that we're already constantly facing right now? And some of these inland ports, even in the state of California, are called diesel death ports because of all the pollution that these things bring. Now on the other side, somebody was gonna say, "Well Jay, this is gonna bring lots of money." Yes, but could we sat down and really figure out where would have been maybe the more appropriate place to put this?
So I'm actually asking for your skills, I mean, those are great examples, and I get-
I've worked, I've worked with the, I volunteer with the school community council, I've done a lot of that. I've also participated as a delegate for my precinct, and as far as doing other volunteer jobs, I have done that as well. To answer your question, no, I have not done any government jobs.
Or does that be government? It could be like a job, like something that you're doing that would, you can actually transfer that knowledge to help on the government, doesn't that be government? It could be a job that you've done. What kind of skills can you bring to the sauce?
Other than being able to manage and negotiate? Yes?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So first of all, what does the county commissioner do? And how are you capable of doing those things? What you have in your skill set?
Well-
So what did he do? And how are you capable of doing that?
Well, they participate in the committees, for example, right now, also the spot that we are all being candidates for, for example, there, Tom works directly with the Utah County attorney. He also works with the associates of Utah Lake, which I'm against, by the way, so make that not be my closing question. And the reason why also I don't agree with that is because I think it brings other pollutants in the air that we have not really considered much. And on top of that, it destroys our aquifers and our swampy areas that we need for wildlife and for the existings to be able to feed into the Great Salt Lake. Yes, sir?
So Mr. Ugarte, I apologize if this might come off as a pointed question. We've been offered a lot of substance this evening, especially by your other four competitors. I feel like a lot of the frustration that some of these questions are being pointed at is that we've been offered just a lot of content, a lot of experience, and a lot of expertise to consider.
Yes.
And we haven't heard yet content, expertise, principles beyond what a Google search of what is a Republican candidate in Utah County say. So I know that we have limited amount of time left. What substance can you offer us?
Substance in the sense that I, substance that other than me being a private sector, being able to work on a budget on my own?
Solidly substance.
That, that is a substance. Obviously, if you don't understand how finance or how to budget yourself, you won't be able to do anything. So that to me is substance. That is also being able to sit across the table and negotiate, that is also substance. Being able to bring in people who are specialists to be able to find the solution, engineering, scientists, that's also a solution in substance. Yes?
What specific policy goals or projects would you focus on in your term if elected?
I think I'd like to continue to work with the attorney and the juvenile centers, they need a lot of attention, and figure out how we can continue to preserve our resource, one of them being Utah Lake. I think that's a beautiful piece of property that we need to continue to preserve for generations to enjoy.
We got about nine minutes left, so.
Yes, sir?
So the commissioner's job rotates throughout your term as to which departments you're responsible for?
Correct.
It's not, you can't pick attorneys and just stay with them.
I agree.
You have knowledge in all the other departments.
Right, but it doesn't take rocket science to figure out to go and study and prepare for it.
It does.
It does.
Yes? I'd have to look at that, I would not know how to answer that. Yes, sir? To protect our open lands? I would have to agree with, how we can preserve that. I think that we are gonna grow, no matter what, we are moving forward, but we can do that responsibly. Yes? Say that one more time? The thing with that is that there's so many strings attached that we'd really have to sit down and figure out, is it viable for us to keep accepting federal money? Cause if the feds continue to send us money, it comes with a lot of dictation that we need to perform. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
What would you do to improve communication between the county commissioners and the county residents?
To be able to communicate more directly with us, I'll give you one example. On the properties that I have, I always have a monthly letter and a quarterly letter that I send on a consistent basis. It allows for people to know that I have a home coming up, whether it be in the next ninety days or in the next hundred and twenty days. And that is a cost, but I think that it's more costly for us not being aware of what's going on with our governing bodies.
So you would recommend a monthly newsletter is what you're saying?
That would be one way, and the other way is for everybody to be aware of where they can find all of our systems, whether it be the websites, whether it be through emails or whatever the case may be. But it would have to be on a constant basis because statistically, it takes over twelve pieces of paper or even twelve pieces of contact before we're able to be responding to it. So I know there's a lot of information that gets put out there, but if it just gets put out there, I mean, we kinda tend to right now even forget that we lived COVID, where we were basically mandated to wear masks. I didn't agree with that. I think it was completely overreach of government. Yes, sir?
Any other questions?
You know, I'm surprised this meeting was scheduled after hours, so you guys can make it. So yes, I'm totally for that. I mean, even our city council meetings are in a time where we can't make it. So I'm all for making the city council and the commissioners' meetings be after hours because we need to be informed of what's going on and have the voice to be able to opinionate what is going on. Yes? Anybody else? Yes, back there in the blue shirt?
So in, we've heard a lot about east-west corridors, and I heard a statistic, and I can't quote it at this time, but I know it's in the millions if not billions of dollars that state suffers in a lack happening on I-15. Does it shut down for an hour or two hours? How many billions of dollars that we lose a year for every time there's an incident? I know there's some studies going north and south for I-15 inculpations. Have you given what we could do with that?
I do not. Yes, way back in the back? Yes. Yes, ma'am? Transparence. We need to really know what's happening. I mean, I know you guys have been hearing a lot about the housing affordability and whatnot, but that doesn't really have much strength from the commission. And also the question we really should be asking is, why is it that a lot of our legislators are land developers?
Oh, there's a question right here?
Yes? Yes?
And attend all the meetings that they need to be there, either by phone or in person. But a lot of times, there's important things and they don't even have a phone call in there.
No, I agree. I, I think that, look, in my opinion, my humble opinion would be is that if eighty percent, if not all, elected officials were paid on the performance, I guarantee we'd have a complete different system. But because they're not paid on performance, we have the issues that we have. And yes, I've now worked in government, but again, I learned and I live in a budget. Why is it that these elected people are not living under a budget? They go in there and vote increases of pay raises. It just seems like, there's a quote from Orrin Hatch who said that once you got all these people that were on welfare to taste the dole, it was hard to get rid of them and off the dole. But it seems to me that it's more reflecting of the elected leaders than it is of the people itself. And government is really there to represent people, not represent their interests. Any other questions?
Forty seconds left.
Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
You said that you were into real estate.
Yes.
Correct? Now, don't you fall in the same category as a developer? With especially just your interest in real estate?
No, my focus is to get into the sore thumb of the neighborhood and go and remodel it.
Still those hands and hands.
It's not developing.